Six thirty, we have four, we'll follow the planning board meeting to order. And first up for general information, Mr. Dwyer?
That would be Molly Keegan.
Thank you. I'm here as a follow-up to a previous visit. We're looking to expand the parking over here located at 104 Middle Street. And the request was made that you would prefer if we went out and got an engineer to review the plan, just to give you some assurances relative to the runoff. So since our last meeting, we went ahead and we were able to get Berkshire Design to take a look at it. And so they have submitted a signed approval with a letter which you should have received. I understand that that was forwarded to all of you. I'm happy to pull it up on my screen, but I didn't know. I know if you've already looked at it, if anybody had any further questions.
How many parking places?
Five, Joe.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you pull it up just so we can all? I may have to authorize sharing. Okay, you're all set.
Okay, hang on. So it's just saying it was disabled.
Yeah, I disabled all participants and I now have.
Gotcha. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, so just to, for orientation, here's Middle Street. The current driveway comes in this way. This is the side door to the property at 104 Middle, if you're familiar with that. And then over to the north side would be the congregational church. So the plan is to put these five parking spaces in here. And you can see, you know, the intent is that it would send it honestly, right now it would kind of naturally slope, but they would make sure that there was a slope into the drainage and there would be this five foot wide stone infiltration trench that runs around it with appropriate landscaping. They've already kind of picked out the plants that they would put around it as well, not only to make it more aesthetically pleasing, but also for for absorption. So Berkshire Design said that this is fine, that there shouldn't be any flow into the right of way. And I also specifically asked in an email and I realized I didn't forward that to you, but I, I can. In his letter, he wasn't specific about drainage to the north. And I remembered when I was getting ready for this meeting that that was a question that came up last time, I think. So I do have an email from the engineer saying that, no, this should take care of any flow in that direction as well, that that wouldn't be a concern.
Just one question, Molly. Could you move the entire parking area, one parking space eastward?
Could I move it one parking space eastward over in this direction?
Yeah, take all, take the five of them and just move them that way towards the top of the paper. Shift everything.
Um, I suppose we could. Why, why Jimmy?
Well, it's just that right now you're, that would just give you thirty, give you a little bit more room for the sidewalk, I'm afraid, just kind of looks kind of close to the sidewalk on Middle Street, that's all. And that extra ten feet or so or nine feet, whatever it's going to be for the parking spaces. I think it'll, it'll be more, look better.
Okay, yeah, right now it looks like if I'm reading this right, it's twenty feet from the sidewalk.
Yeah, I think your parking space look like they're nine foot, so you're gonna be, say call it thirty feet, twenty-nine feet away from the sidewalk. I just think that would be better.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's an issue with that.
Okay.
I'm just trying to think, because there's a, there's a flower bed there, but that's already, we know that we were going to need to take that out anyway. And I don't think that here's the only thing, I'm just looking at this curvature here. But yeah, I mean, I can certainly talk to Taylor Davis and see.
Okay.
If it's not, is there any leeway, Jim? If it's not exactly nine feet and like they can work it out where it's?
I mean, I'm not gonna argue if it's eight feet, seven feet, something like that. I mean, something like that. I, I just think it'd look better.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think what they were doing was what they were centering it on the side entrance, really.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All in favor, Mr. Dwyer will make a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive further site plan approval for the location that parking design has shown.
No, as shown, but moved, moved about, with about, well, I would say about one parking space eastward. Okay, that is the motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Sarszynski, second, he had his unmute. All in favor? Aye. One, all, motion passes four with one, one absent.
Okay, thank you.
Next up would be Lynn Gray.
Good evening. Thank you for putting this on the agenda so quickly for us. This is just a proposed signage installation on the exterior wall of the Hampshire Mall facing South Maple. This is for our newest tenant opening Fun Hub Action Park. It's a trampoline park that's currently under construction on the former Audubon location. The signage that we're proposing would be next to the existing PINS exterior sign on the west side of the property between the cinema entrances and the Planet Fitness entrance. It is consistent in size and scale for the existing signage that was approved by the ZBA in October of 2017 as part of PINS opening. And some of the rationale that we just wanted to share as far as our requesting, seeking this variance as we realize this does not conform to the existing bylaws. PINS opened in 2017. They did have a strong response upon their initial opening. However, post-COVID, small mall shop and entertainment have continued to struggle, including our theaters, to regain momentum since 2019. Fun Hub is currently under construction. We're hoping that they're going to be opening sometime in September. It complements the entertainment use within the enclosed shopping center with Interscape Cinema Mart and PINS. Being in an enclosed shopping center generates synergy with the existing tenants to remain viable and successful for the long term. We do a food court tenants and limited small mall shop retail. And they all really do thrive on the entertainment operator's success. Both PINS and Fun Hub do not have exterior access points. You need to enter one of the four main mall entrances in order to, to visit their establishments. And neither of them having exterior access points could be a detriment if they didn't have the proper branding or signage to let customers know where and how to access their location. So we feel it's in the best interest of this tenant to support these large format tenants to be successful with the proper branding and visibility. It's not a request for other small shop access to have branding on our building for each individual tenant. You know, I know that our competitors across the street at Hadley Corner and at WS definitely, you know, they've got a nice prominent visibility for each individual tenant. That's not what we're looking for here. We're just looking for a request for a large format operator like this at thirty-three thousand square feet and no other concepts in the area at that size. The mall would require a more prominent presence in the market. It is on the backside of the mall. It's not Route Nine facing, it is South Maple facing. And I do have some additional photos if those would be helpful as you look over this request.
Okay, the, I doubt the planning board is going to be against the proposal because like it says, PINS has to sign. However, the zoning board of appeals made an error when they approved the PINS sign. It is internally illuminated. Internally illuminated signs are not prohibited. Therefore, this proposed sign that you're proposing cannot be internally illuminated. It needs to be externally illuminated.
Okay.
You know, I mean.
Do we want to speak to the legality of the zoning board of appeals once again going? Is there any reason to grant a variance? Bill, would you like to comment?
I don't think there is. I, DeeDee did send around the the ZBA's decision. I was just reading it, the, you know, the the reasons the board of appeals may make a favorable decision, very restrictive bylaw from mall uses. And the hardships are all limited to mall operations and nothing to do with any of the statutory criteria. So I guess the thought I have is that it's, the sign is three times the size of what would be allowed under the current zoning for a store in a multi-tenant building that had its own exterior entrance. So on the other hand, it is on the backside, so.
But it, it. You know, for the audience and for Lynn, this happened before. The zoning board of appeals without due consideration to the zoning bylaws and which was approved by the town meeting, even though we wanted bigger signs, the town said no. So if Lynn is requesting another entrance, if that is her proposal for meeting for us, I would grant the entrance, but I would say the sign has to conform to the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, there's no way for us to get them an entrance there. And the, the backside of their facility dumps out into a loading dock. So there, there would be no opportunity for them to have an exterior entrance on the front side of the mall that would be between PetSmart and Dick's Sporting Goods.
So what is your request to us for this evening?
For this evening, it would be to allow them to have a sign similarly sized to what PINS has on the west side, not, not both sides, just the west side of where the, the theaters are on the exterior of the building. To give them.
On the. The planning board doesn't have authority to grant that waiver, Ms. Gray.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And I, and I did ask Bill if there was, you know, if, if it would be preferred that I presented this evening or if I go straight to the ZBA, understanding it's not conforming. I wanted to make sure you understood that we would be seeking a variance.
Okay.
Okay, so obviously we do not approve the larger sign than allowed under the zoning bylaws. And in the past, if, if you go to the zoning board of appeals, if you would notify the planning board and generally, some members of the planning board would be at the ZBA hearing to voice our objection. That's what we've done in the past.
That's what happened in 2017. I believe Jim was actually at that meeting to, to voice the concern from the planning board.
And they approved it regardless of our, our negative concerns?
We, yeah, we did get the approval.
They approved the sign, yes. What was, what was an error? It wasn't noticed that it was internally illuminated.
Actually, it was two signs on the same decision, one for Planet Fitness and one for PINS.
Correct.
I think I sent that around earlier. Yeah, I did forward that around earlier.
You did. So how, how do we handle this?
Well, I mean, obviously, if they go to the ZBA, we will be notified of the public hearing. I will voice my opinion about not being, not allowing it to be internally illuminated. If the, if the board wants to take a position on not committing the sign, then make a motion and we'll vote on it.
I, I think we almost have to make a, a motion. It's not permitted. Because legally, there is no reason to grant a variance.
There's no hardship, is there?
No, there is no hardship. And we got into this, this contest many years ago with the zoning board of appeals and, you know, they approved bigger and bigger and bigger signs. And then finally, the, the planning board said, that's it. You're going against the bylaw. There's no reason for the variance and we're going to legally object. And so they finally got the message and they realized that signs must conform unless there was a real problem with the variance.
It seems to me that the malls got themselves in this pickle and they've got to redesign their, their signage out front to comply.
No, no, if it's, if it's there already, that's one thing. But if they want to make it bigger, they cannot.
That's what I mean.
What does the board wish to do?
I don't think we have a choice. I don't think I think if we are going to go by what, what has happened in the past and what we have said before, that if, if the sign doesn't comply, there is no like, I'm talking like a lawyer, Bill, but there's no legitimate reason to grant a variance.
I agree.
Just so I'm clear, Joe, on your opposition here, that you, you would like the, the center and/or the tenant to demonstrate a hardship in order for this to, to even.
Cannot be legal or because somebody else is doing it.
No, no, I, no, I, I was sharing that the, the history, I was sharing where we were coming from, but if there is a hardship to share, then that's something that we'll dig into.
Okay, so hardship is only one item. There also has to be something unique about the, about the property unlike property elsewhere that warrants special attention. So, Joe, are you making a motion to object to the grant of the variance?
Yes, I am.
I'll second that.
Okay, okay. So we're not, we're not saying yes or no to the sign. We're just saying the motion is to object to the grant of a variance by another board.
So that's all the authority we have here.
We object. Well, I guess we cannot object because of a variance was granted.
Well, well, no, no, we're not, we're not, that's a past issue. This is the one in front of us. That's the one you're making a motion about is the one that's being proposed, right?
Fun Hub.
You're correct.
Yes.
That's what we have.
We, we have no authority to approve the sign or to not approve this sign because it's beyond, it's not conforming. So all we could do is object to the granting, we request the ZBA. What is your motion, Joe?
That the planning board recommends that we do not grant the sign.
We don't have, no, not us. We can't grant this. This is going to the, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. You continue, I'm sorry.
What is the proposal before us this evening specifically?
There's nothing really before us. It's just here for information. So what I, what I wrote down is motion in second to object to grant of a variance for non-conforming sign.
Can I second to this?
Right. That sound good, Joe?
That sounds okay.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
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 Aye. Mister, the motion is four zero with Mister, with one absent. We want to call, let's make that a roll call, though. Just, just for the, for the record, Mr. Zrodnik?
Aye.
Mr. Mr. Sarszynski?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Maximovsky says aye, so forth. And Mr. Dunn is absent. Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm here.
Okay.
It's a different Mr. Dunn.
Sorry.
Yeah. Don's phone.
Yeah, sorry. Can you hear me?
We'll, we'll get to you in a minute.
Yeah, we'll get you in a minute. Okay. That is it. Notified, I'll go to the ZBA meeting and notify them of our vote.
Okay, thank you. I, while I have your attention, just for a quick second, DeeDee had brought up to me that the planning board might also be interested in hearing about the, the butcher, the backyard butchers event or, or the proposed event for this truck to be on site for 10 days at the mall in the parking lot. It, it sounds like they got the board, without the mall's knowledge, they got the, the board of health to approve a license. We are planning to present this information to the select board tomorrow evening as far as their, their event setup and request. But she thought that it might be of interest to the planning board as well. So I just wanted you to, to weigh in on that as well.
The planning board is very much interested in this because how will it affect parking? Where is it going to be? What about various issues? They definitely, they should definitely, in my opinion, they need to come to the planning board and present what they would like to do to see if it's going to be okay with the zoning issues.
Okay, I will let them know that.
Okay, when do they want to start this?
They wanted to start the end of this month, but given their timelines, I'm not sure that that's going to be possible. But I will let them know that in addition to the select board, the board of health, they will also need to present to the planning board.
Okay, our next meeting is September 6th. That will be the next meeting that they could attend because it's a five Tuesday month. So we, for the next two weeks, we will not have meetings.
Understood. I will let them know that.
Okay, just well, let you know. Thank you.
So it's just going to be for 10 days? It's not a permanent installation?
No, it would just be a parking lot event for 10 days. And it would be.
What is it exactly?
It would be seven, seven parking spaces that would be taken up by their truck. And they would set up a tent. All would need to be approved, obviously, by building and fire. And that would be where they're selling their, you know, their meat selections. They, they do this in various other properties and areas of the country. And their interest is in Hadley specifically at this point. And it would be, you know, seven to eight spaces max in the parking lot.
What are they selling?
Meat, steaks and ribs and all sorts of, of meat.
What, what, butchered raw meat?
Yes. Prepackaged, right, prepackaged all in the, the cooler on the, on their truck.
So Lynn had sent materials to DeeDee. I sent them around, but they didn't get out until this afternoon. So there's, you could, you could plan your grilling.
Twenty ribeyes for $39.
A one ounce?
You drive by, you know, I'd be first stopping at Atkins and knowing what I'm getting.
Okay, I will let them know that they need to present to the planning board.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, so Don's iPhone is up next. So can we have your name and the property you're asking about?
My name is Don McTavish. I'm the owner of Mac Print and Copy in Westfield in regards to a sign at 245 Russell Street, Unit 16, for Linden Tree Care. I had submitted the application, the draft on July 5th, and I was not able to make the last meeting. And here I am today. It's a two foot by eight foot aluminum sign that will go above a window, maybe eight feet high in the air, replacing a sign that was previously taken down by the prior tenant. That was the same size. I measured where you could see there's mold and mildew behind the sign after they took it down. So I just sized it up the same dimensions and that's what I was working with.
Previous tenant was?
I believe it's, was it Amherst? Amherst Motors. If you go on Google Maps and go back to the property, the sign is still up.
So 245, and you said you sent, you sent something in?
To DeeDee, yes.
Oh, to DeeDee? You didn't send anything to the planning?
And paid the fee online for the new sign. And then I've been back and forth. It's just back off the road. I know she said that.
Where's 245? Anybody got a?
Right after the old fence on the, right after. Excuse me. Linden Tree Care is at 243. They have the old hasty fence property. And then after is the multi-unit complex.
Oh, that is the one behind. So there's, there's a sign with multiple names on it. As you enter, then you drive behind where the fence company was and behind where Lisa's Jesus is. So those just have they're not two by eight.
The sign that was previously there, I measured, like I said, where the mold and mildew from the old sign and.
You're talking about a sign out front by Route Nine or you're talking about a sign on the building behind?
Thing itself, all the way back.
Okay, different. All right.
You're gonna be putting a little sign and a marquee out front too?
I am not, no.
Oh, okay.
I'm assuming that would be the landlord's.
Okay, yeah, the, the owner was Zoharodnik, no relation. I know, I know what the property you're talking about.
Okay, yeah.
So, okay.
So I, I don't see that I have received a copy of the sign, but it just says Linden Tree Care?
All right, yes. I mean, I had submitted it, like I said, on July 5th.
Yeah, we're, we're not a part of the online permitting system. So unless you emailed it to planning at Hadley MA, I don't have it.
DeeDee told me to send it to you last week and probably about 10 minutes after that was said, I emailed you everything I had.
Okay, so what email address did that come from?
I would have been a macprintcopy@gmail.com.
Mac.
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 Correct.
Okay, okay. There I have something. And okay, got it on July 28th. Okay, so let me bring this up.
Good catch, Bill. Good find.
Okay. Let me just get some things out of here. Okay. Now. Okay. So if you can see that this is what
Okay.
was there, Amherst Appraisal Drive-In Claim Center.
Correct.
Okay. And this is what is proposed in the same footprint.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to waive further review.
Second.
Second. You got it.
Could you email that to us, Bill?
I, I will.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion passes four zero with one absent.
Yeah, I think I did send it around, if, if July 28th, but I Yeah, I think I did send it around if if July twenty-eighth, but I will I will reforward it.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Let me see if I got it, Bill, here. Four oh one. Yeah, I've got it right here, Bill. I do mine.
Okay. Okay.
Yep, you did send it around on twenty eighth.
Okay. Uh, don't save as a draft. Get out of there. Back to here. Uh, the next person was Dylan Corey, but I recognize his name as a reporter. So if you have something to add to talk to us about, just say hi. Otherwise, we'll move on.
Nope, nope, just watching. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, next up was Jim Boyle.
Hi, how are you guys doing?
Very well. How are you?
Thanks for having me. Um, I had a reached out a couple of months ago to the licensing person to see if I could start a get a car license in town. We we work, we own Kitchen Concepts over at one seventeen Russell Street, right down the road from the Town Hall. And for years, my father-in-law had a car license and we'd get all our cars for our for our company through him and all our vans and trucks and all that. And so we have a pretty good fleet over there, and he's retiring. And so now we have no way to kind of get these cars anymore. So when I reached out to the licensing board, they suggested that I put a package together and told me what I needed and then suggested that I meet with you guys, go over what I wanted to do and see if we could, you know, get approval to then go in front of the select board. So I think I had sent Bill a plan of the of our office. So in order to do this, you're required to, you know, have certain size office, certain size parking lot, certain parking spaces. Uh, so we measured everything up. We do have everything that is required. Our building is is big enough. Uh, we have a we have a large office that would be able to house the dealership. We have a parking area of almost six thousand square feet, and then we have four to six parking spots that we could dedicate for this. And then we got a sign made up as to what we'd have for a sign because we're required to have a sign. Um, so we have that. And then, like I said, I got I have a few pictures of our office in there. I'm sure you guys have actually driven by our office, our showroom before.
Great. Once again, it's exactly where is it located? One seventeen, one one seven, right?
The old post office.
The old the old post office?
You want to do our dealership in the center of town?
Well, I actually don't want to. So that's the thing. So I'm looking for a license, so I'm able to go to the auction and and stuff like that. But we're not necessarily looking to have cars out there on a regular basis. I think we'd have a car out there once in a while, like if one of our vans, if we wanted to replace it, maybe sell the old van and get and get the new one. But primarily, we're going to be using it only for basically ourselves.
So I sent the package around on August second with all of the pictures and and the sign design. I'm not, oh, I'm not sure that that built property ever went through site plan approval.
It did not. That was a kitchen design place too, once. Yeah, I think we might have waved it, might have. I don't know what we did with that.
There was some, it was a modular home company at one point. They wanted to put a modular home, a display unit in the backyard. I don't know if it's still there or not, but.
No. Okay, then. So we got to have a site client there, so.
Hey, Bill, are you able to put, like you put that girl's stuff up on the side? Are you able to put that up? Or did she do that?
I can put it up. Although let's see, how many pieces is this in?
Just one.
Well. Okay, there are multiple little photos here, but I will. Let's see, I'll work my way through them.
Oh, photos. I'm talking about the plot plan, yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure that.
That's actually on the third attachment.
Well, you actually have a lot of attachments. And is that the end of it? Okay, let me see what I can do here. I believe that is your.
Yes, perfect. So the it's side. So the right side is the front drive-in area. It's in front of the office. Can you guys see my my mouse?
No, we can't. It's my mouse that matters.
Okay, so right where you are now is a front parking lot. And that's where we park for our kitchen area. On the right side, you can drive up the right side. And then you can put vehicles in the back. So we have two vehicles in the back now all the time. And then the rest of the parking spots are just open. Most of our guys park on the job sites. We work offsite for most of our work. So our guys are typically on the job sites themselves. But as you can see, there's plenty of parking spaces in the rear. And then our showroom has plenty of office space inside for any of this. We could have a dedicated office for it and all that.
What is this notation at the bottom of the sheet of looks like arrows?
That's actually I'm that's grass. So that would be the left side of the building. So the plane that you're looking at is sideways. And so the front is the right side. And the part where you're talking about those arrows, that's actually grass, little grass shoots. I was trying to draw him.
Okay.
So there's twenty-one feet over there on that side. And that's all grass. It's not really used. But you can see down below where my sign is in the front there. Exist where it says existing sign over towards the right.
That would be down.
Yep, right there. So that's where our kitchen concept sign is and stuff. So you guys have probably driven by that quite a few times. So like I said, we park right up front. Excuse me?
Yeah, it's this is another business piece. Or is kitchen design going going away?
No, but it would just be in addition to it. So kitchen, the kitchen design would be staying, yes.
So you got to have. I'm afraid we're going to have to go through site plan review. How many parking places? Kitchen design, how many people are going to come in there? And the parking it's got to be so far back from Route nine. Drainage. I I don't know what does what does the rest of the board think? I mean, you're. I mean, being two businesses in a site opens up into a different ballgame. It does, yeah.
This this wasn't, did you sell cars there previously?
No, 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 the Northwest Restoration, that was actually based out of West Hampton. So her father's name at his company was Northwest Restoration. The what we're trying to name this one is Northwest Restoration Two. But no, we never sold cars out of there.
So the the Board of Selectmen is the one that eventually is going to grant the license. And generally, they they give us the courtesy of listening to to the applicant and how many spaces will be needed, where will the spaces be located, et cetera, et cetera, before they grant a license. So I I think a site plan is in order. You've got to show where the parking is, how many employees will be coming in, going, or and how many parking places will be designated for employees and how many for your cars?
But I understand this for your class two license, you're required to have a number of vehicles on site. Maybe it's only one or two. But we went through this previously with someone who wanted the class two license primarily for doing online sales. But realized he still had to have a physical presence. So you have to add that on top of what you have already. And I know it's a previously developed site, but the more uses you shoehorn in there, the more concerned we get. So I guess I would agree with Dr. Zagradnick that we need to do some level of site plan approval here.
Okay. So I mean, I drew a pretty good plan. I mean, are you just looking for definition of parking spots?
No, you you need to talk to unfortunately, you need to talk to an engineer or a surveyor that's familiar with the zone bylaws and have them create a site plan approval application. Because this is getting complicated with two businesses on one site. If we're just getting rid of Kitchen Concepts and putting a used car lot in there, we could probably deal with your sketch that you've made up because it seems to be to scale. But seeing that you're going to put two businesses on one site, it it opens it up to a different set of criteria.
Okay. All right.
Um, you know, I'm sorry about that, but that's just the way it is.
Okay. All right, well, I will I will talk to an engineer and then I guess I will get back in touch with Bill.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you, guys.
Okay.
And I think Kurt Chumway came in next, but we know what he's here for. And let's see, Mike Gagnon.
I think he was, we'll see. Are you with us again with Mr. Chumway?
Yes, I am. Okay, we're here to talk about Russell Street when you're ready.
Okay, okay, just a minute. Let me do the formalities here. The whole planning board will conduct a Zoom public hearing on Tuesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, beginning at six forty-five PM. Purpose of the hearing is to review the application of Amherst Development Associates for special permits, site plan approval, and farmland preservation bylaw, aka TDR, to construct new office building at four oh one Russell Street, former Hojo. And a new building will be forty-one thousand seven hundred square feet by three floors or equaling one hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred square feet. The TDR hearing is to exceed the seventy-five thousand square feet of building. Plans and fee schedule are available by mailing planning at Hadley MA or visit Town Clerk's Office, published twice in the Gazette, July nineteen and twenty-six. Mr. Gagnon, you're up. You're on mute.
Okay, very good. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Well, first and foremost, thank you once again for having us. We're here to present the proposed project at four oh one Russell Street. I'm sure, as you're all familiar, this is actually the site of the former or the current Howard Johnson's right next to Staples. I will, when I get into the plan set, I can kind of give you an orientation for those that are not familiar with the site in terms of where we're at. May I share my screen?
Yes, go ahead. But just a minute, can I just want to clarify one thing so we don't start off confused? I Jim and I talked about the legal notice. That was what was published in the paper, but actually it overstates the size of the project. This is not this is a forty thousand square foot building plus or minus?
It's forty-one thousand seven hundred square feet.
That's the whole. That's not the footprint. That's the whole building.
That's the whole building, the three floors.
Oh, okay. I thought that seemed kind of big for the footprint that I was looking at. I misread the plan. That's fine. I mean, it's published. We don't need to do the TDR. That's not a problem. If it's there, we don't need it. It's when it's not there and we need it. That's been a problem in the past. Okay.
Yes, I was going to mention that as well, too, because I heard that. I said, whoa, too big.
Okay.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for clarifying that. May I share my screen?
Yeah, go ahead. Yep, it is set up for all participants.
Can everybody see that? You should be looking at our cover page.
Yes.
Okay. So first of all, the project proponent is Amherst Development Associates by Kurt Chumway, who's also here in attendance this evening. So you know, any specific questions about the operations, you know, please feel free to chime in accordingly. We have undergone peer review or are currently going through peer review by Berkshire Design Group. And I will get into those details in a moment. Just a couple of project updates. You know, we presented this project initially way back in October of twenty twenty-one. Subsequent to that, we've had, you know, a couple of meetings since then, specifically with your Conservation Commission. We filed for site plan review. We actually filed the plans and supporting documentation on July fourteenth. We've also, as I just mentioned, we had a couple of meetings with the Conservation Commission. We were supposed to have a meeting as of recent, last Tuesday, however, that was canceled due to, I understand, a missed posting with a legal notice. So we have another hearing with them next Monday, August twenty-second. Um, so as I mentioned, I'm going to jump right into the exist. This is our existing conditions and removals plan. So this kind of gives an overview of the site. This shows essentially the existing structures and pavements that are going to be removed. Just to give you an overview, this is the existing footprint of the Howard Johnson's building. This is the canopy that is out in front, the pool area here in the back. So as you can see, the the building is actually going to be removed completely in its entirety as well as the surrounding pavement as represented by the hatched area here. Currently, there are two, there's two drive or driveway cuts out onto Russell Street as shown here. This one is essentially going to be removed, and we are going to retain basically the upper driveway entrance, and I'll get into that in a moment. This is the driveway to Westgate Center Drive. Essentially, it cuts through the Staples property, which is located to the eight east of the project site. And Midas happens to be down here. Just to kind of zoom into the site locus plan, this kind of gives you an understanding of the various properties that surround the site. As I mentioned, Staples is over here. This is Westgate Center Drive. Russell Street is out here. And we actually added the this a butter's map at the request of Berkshire Design Group through one of their review comments. The existing building is about twenty-seven thousand square feet, give or take. It was constructed back in nineteen sixty-six. So you know, it is somewhat dated. The existing parcel size is about five and a half acres. There is a large wetland resource area that's out in this back area here. We had a detailed field survey was conducted by. Um, we had a detailed, uh, field survey, uh, was conducted by Sherman and Frederick, uh, that was done in July twenty twenty one. Um, and the wetlands, uh, at the rear of the property was delineated, um, by our group or by, uh, SLR uh, in November of twenty twenty. So that's kind of an overview, um, of existing conditions, um, on the site. Getting into the proposed plan, this is the, going to be the site layout. So this is the proposed, the new footprint of the building that's represented by this gray hatched area. Uh, as I mentioned before, um, the primary site entrance will be up in this area here. Uh, pretty much at the same location as that upper driveway. So essentially, um, eastbound traffic on Route nine will enter, um, the site at this location here. Likewise, any traffic that is leaving the site will only be able to exit, uh, and go via, uh, Route nine, uh, eastbound, uh, because it is a limited access roadway, uh, with a center divider here. The other option is to utilize the Westgate Center access here. Um, this is going to be maintained, uh, with the proposed project. Um, and that, that's an option for folks, uh, that will be using, um, this property. So what we've done is we've provided, um, parking layout here with, uh, two hundred and nine parking spaces, uh, which conforms to your requirements. Um, I won't drill into the detail, but we've provided um, a zoning table here that shows the dimensions and densities, um, that are required for this particular business zone. Um, as well as the yard setbacks. Uh, in addition, we've provided, um, parking data, uh, for the proposed site. Uh, this plan also shows the landscaping improvements, uh, that will be provided as part of the project. Um, as you can see, there's a number of tree plantings, um, that will be, uh, incorporated into the landscape islands, uh, throughout the property here. Um, we've also provided, uh, some landscaping, um, in the front of the building here as well. Uh, in terms of stormwater management, uh, we, and I'll, I'll get into those details in a moment, but we essentially have three uh, sta- stormwater management basins, um, for not only peak flow reduction, but also to provide water quality enhancements. Uh, so we have one basin that's going to be located out in the front of the building here. Um, the second basin is going to be situated down in this location here. And then the third stormwater basin is going to be, uh, constructed along the parking lot, um, in this area here. One of the things that we've tried to incorporate with this project, uh, in terms of stormwater management is to, to utilize, uh, traditional, uh, methods. In other words, um, not to utilize, uh, a closed, uh, collection system consisting of catch basins and and stormwater pipes. Um, everything is going to or all of the runoff from the parking areas, um, is going to sheet flow towards the stormwater management basins. Um, with the exception of the roof water from the proposed building, uh, will be collected via roof leaders, um, that will be, um, piped into, uh, the, the stormwater management basin. Um, the main entrance to the building, um, is actually going to be in the rear, uh, just to zoom in here a little bit. So, you know, folks will enter here. This is going to be the primary entrance, um, back in here. And I can, I can show you the, uh, the building elevations in a moment. Um, that, that shows that the different sides of the buildings are, or, or the elevation views. Um, as part of this project, uh, we also prepared a traffic impact study uh, that was submitted with the documents and essentially, um, that concluded that there's going to be minimal impact um, to the surrounding roadway network and Berkshire Design Group, uh, um, actually concurred with that assessment as well. Just one thing to note is that, um, one of our recommendations in the report, um, depending on who the tenants are, um, going to be of the building is, you know, there, there is, uh, um, one of the things we recommend is potentially, um, is to adjust the signal timings, uh, at Route nine, Route one sixteen and Westgate Center Drive if necessary, um, in the future. So, you know, that provision is in there, and I believe Berkshire also concluded, um, with that as well. Kind of jumping into, uh,
If I could just, just stop there for a second. Does, does MassDOT have any obligation to accommodate that?
That could be a request. From what I understand, that can be a re- request that can be submitted to the district office. Um, if the town sees the need that adjustments need to be made. So I, you know, I believe that there is that capability to, to make that request, Bill.
That's something the town would have to do presumably based on some input from the the property owner, if, if they're having trouble getting people in and out of their site.
Correct, correct. And/or it might even come from the, uh, the district office themselves if they see that there are need, there's a need to um, adjust the timing. Um, as everybody knows, the Route nine corridor is fairly busy. And really, um, you know, one of the aspects of that is, is obviously other development in the area, um, would have to be considered as well. So. Um, so just jumping in, this is our site grading and utility plan. Um, so this shows more or less how the site, uh, is going to be graded, uh, with the proposed, uh, improvements. One of the things that, you know, we had to pay attention to obviously is being able to feather into existing grades, uh, particularly in the back here. Um, one of the things that we had to honor as much as possible um, is this thirty five foot no disturbance zone, um, as delineated back here. So that's why we've got, for example, the stormwater basin, um, is tucked up in this area here. Um, this is that collection system that I was talking about, uh, a moment ago, that's going to pick up the essentially the roof leaders, um, from the building. Uh, we also have a connection, uh, between the two stormwater basins here. Um, such that, um, what that does is that it allows this basin in the front of the building, um, to essentially de-water uh, as necessary, because one of the, one of the requirements, um, that we need to comply to in terms of the stormwater management standards is, um, you know, we can't have standing water, uh, in the, in the, uh, stormwater basins. In other words, these facilities have to be able to de-water, uh, within a reasonable, uh, period of time. Otherwise you get into, um, you know, mosquito issues, um, and the like. But again, um, as I mentioned previously, all of the sheet flow from the parking area um, is going to make its way to the, the stormwater management basin in the rear here. One of the things that we've done, um, because we, we do not have curb uh, across the back perimeter here so that that, that flow can make its way into the basins. Um, is we've provided wheel stops here so that, you know, that sheet flow has, has the ability um, to get into, uh, the stormwater management practices. This is our, uh, sediment and erosion control plan. Um, this shows everything that needs to be done, uh, during construction with respect to sediment and erosion controls. So we're showing, uh, perimeter controls, um, that are around the back here. And we've also provided details, um, uh, for those facilities in the plan set. Likewise, the stormwater management basin, uh, particularly in the back, because it is going to be three to one slopes, uh, is going to be, uh, reinforced with, uh, erosion control matting. And what that does is that just minimizes, you know, any sloughing, um, of the embankments and and provides an enhancement, uh, to that vegetation or the grasses, um, to get established, um, in that area. One other thing that we do show on this plan, um, and this came at the request of the conservation commission is we did add, uh, snow storage, um, that, that seems to be a, uh, popular topic, uh, not necessarily now, but um, we need to provide for snow storage on all of these sites. And, you know, one of the, one of the comments that, that we heard is that, you know, they wanted to ensure that snow was not going to be stockpiled, um, in the various stormwater management, um, facilities. And we've, uh, we've provided, um, a note to that effect. Um, in addition, these areas will be protected, um, there's, uh, with timber guide rail, um, that will be shown or is shown um, along the back perimeter here. Um, so that that, you know, any, um, snow clearing operations as a result of plowing can't just be merely pushed, um, into the bank. They have to resort to utilizing some of the other, um, island areas that are shown here. So these are just, you know, some of our details. This is our sediment and erosion control plan. Uh, we have a narrative, um, that's outlined here, the, that outlines, um, all of those specific requirements. Um, our compost filter tube, uh, detail here, um, along that barack back area, particularly adjacent to the wetland resource area in the back. Uh, we've provided a reinforcement with silt fence. And what that is, is that just affords the additional, um, barrier protection. Um, this is the erosion, uh, erosion control blanket, um, that I was talking about earlier. Um, that will be provided, um, in the, uh, the stormwater management basin. Um, our other miscellaneous details, I won't, I won't drill into any of these unless there's any specific questions, but you know, our paving details, um, accessibility signage, uh, you know, and some landscaping details, uh, and the like. These are our stormwater management details. Um, we're also show the, the dumpster enclosure here. Um, and then these are typical sections, um, of the stormwater management basins. Um, you know, as I had mentioned, you know, we took, uh, measures to ensure that we get the, the stormwater quality, um, volume that we need for the site. So, uh, essentially what we're going to have to do, particularly in that basin number three, which is down behind the parking area um, in the rear, that's going to require some soil amendments so that we can, uh, we can, um, infiltrate, um, that stormwater without, without having any standing water issues. Uh, the soils out here are pretty tight, by the way, uh, they're hydrologic class, uh, C and D. So, you know, the amendments, um, are going to be necessary to, to enhance infiltration. This is our timber guide rail, uh, detail that's showing up here. This is what I was just mentioning, um, that's going to be, um, provided for protection, uh, particularly in the rear of the parking area. And then just some more of our miscellaneous details here. Um, one other thing, this is going to take a moment to come up. We also prepared a rendering, uh, that was included in your package. So this is a, um, a, a colored rendering of, of what the site is going to look like once it's complete. Um, and this is actually superimposed on, on a recent ortho photo. Uh, this is Russell Street, um, off to the left here. Uh, this is the access to Westgate Center Drive. Staples is up here, um, up in this area here. So this really kind of shows the, the various plantings, uh, that will be provided. Um, and we've also shown the, the proposed, uh, site lighting, um, um, that's going to be provided as well. And on this plan, uh, we also show the, uh, the plant schedule of the various plantings, um, that will be provided. This is the perspective view, um, of the building, uh, that was prepared by Kunt Riddle Architects, um, as retained, um, um, by Kurt, uh, and his team. So this is basically a perspective view um, of what the building, uh, is going to look like from Russell Street. And just going through, um, these are the exterior elevation. So starting off with, this is going to be the south elevation of the building. Um, the building may not, I just to warn you, it may not look exactly like this, but this is more or less the intent um, overall of, of what they're thinking in terms of particularly with respect to the materials, um, that are going to be used on the exterior. This is generally, um, um, what, what is going to be used. This is the north elevation, um, at the top of the page here. This is essentially what's going to be facing Russell Street. Um, so this is what you would be looking at, um, um, from the roadway. And then these are the side elevations, the east elevation and west elevation, uh, respectively. So the west elevation, um, you can see there's an overhead door here. We've got a little, a loading area. Um, that's going to be provided. This is on the, on the same side as, uh, as Midas. Um, so that's kind of it, um, uh, kind of an overview of the project, um. Is there any questions or I can go into, um, maybe some of the, the peer review comments in terms of where we're at, um, in that process?
Let's just take questions on the project first before we get into the peer review.
Sure.
What did you, what do you mean by the building may not look like exactly like this?
So there might be some minor deviations like in the window, uh, treatments. Um, but as I say, generally, this is what it's going to look like in terms of materials.
Well, 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 the building basically, I mean, that, that's a pretty concerning statement. The building may not exactly look like this. I mean, I'm not, I mean, wha- what, other than window treatments, I mean, how, how much difference from the window treatment?
I don't think, I, I think in terms of size, you know, the, the massing in terms of what you're looking at. Because one of the things we have to demonstrate is what the overall height of the building is. Um, but for example, um, you know, maybe Kirk can speak to this, but you know, we, you know, the, you know, maybe the trim might be a little bit different, um, up here. You know, it may not be exactly as shown here, but I think what I'm getting at is like, for example, the use of brick. You know, how the windows look. I, I think, I, I think this is going to be what it's going to look like for the most part.
Yeah, Jim, it's, 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 I get the, it's hard to say that it's exact because s- sometimes we have some minor alterations based on tenant needs, window configurations, things like that. So I would say to you that, um, this is really close. We don't have a tenant right now. And I would say that if something is materially different, or if you would like us to come back, if there's however you want to define it, so you can take a look at the building. Of course, that's not a problem. But we're trying to show you, in, in fact, the last meeting, I think if you, I use the buildings over at Atwood Drive as a, as an example of what we want this to look like. So this is sort of a, a, another one of, a, another look of the same kind of or, of the same kind of feel is those buildings over there, and they're just slightly different each one. So.
Go ahead. I mean, the building is very attractive. In my opinion, I like, I love the look of the building. Don't get me wrong. I just that, you know, in the past, we've had somebody say, well, it may not look exactly like this. Now I'm not saying you're, you would do this, Kirk, because we know, we've known you for too long. However, sometimes it comes in, well, it doesn't look exactly like this. It comes back looking like, that's nothing like what you showed us.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to leverage a little bit our relationship and some of our history that, um, if I, if I see something that comes in significant, I mean, I'd be happy to just come back and show it to you formally or informally. And if you guys feel that what I'm showing you needs to come back to the board, I'd be happy to do that.
You know, I, I would think, you know, I, I would think an informal look at what you, what your changes are down the road would be much appreciated.
Yeah, I'd be happy.
I, I personally would not hold up your approval based on you're going to make some minor changes.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. You know, we're just, again, we've, we've got a lot of peoples with opinions. And so by the time we get done, there might be a little tweak here or there. I'll, I'll, I'll just tell you right now, when we, when we finalize the the look, I'll bring it to you informally. And if you feel that we need to do something more formal, I'd be happy to go through that process.
Okay. I, I, I would, I trust you. I believe that's a good idea.
All right, we'll, we'll do that.
Just to add, could you put the planting plan back up? Cause I went online and your, your file. Because I went online and your, your file has been removed online, so I couldn't take a look at it.
It's a big file, so it takes a minute to load, so that this, this one.
I just want, just enlarge the planting plan in the lower left corner. Zoom in on a planting, be detailed, not, not that, the actual listing, that's it, the plant schedule. I just want to take a look at it because when I went online, like I said, the, the plan had been no longer there. All right. Okay, just a comment. You have three inch caliber trees listed.
Up in this area here, yeah.
Right, that's a big tree. If you list a three foot, three inch caliber tree, we want to see a three inch caliber tree put in. We've seen this before, somebody put list three, three inch or four inch, and they come in with an inch and a half. So if you're going to list a three inch, you're going to put a three inch in. And given the droughts and everything else going on, I don't think you want to put a three inch caliber tree in. And that's just my opinion coming from years ago of farming.
Yeah, Jim, I'm, I'm going to tell you that, I'm going to agree with you, we're, we're, we're doing that building down on the corner of Cross and Ginger Garden. And we're, we're having a brutal time even getting the supply, this type of planting. So I don't know what you suggest.
I'm not, I'm suggesting, take a look at what you're going to put in. And if you want to hold the planting schedule to come back when you move, when you show us the building, what it's going to find it look like, that's fine. Because you're not going to put these planning schedules in until for a while.
Yeah, that's, we're, we're ways away from that. So what, why don't we, why don't we say we're going to try to come back and, 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 and take a look at this when the times are more current and when we actually start doing something here and we can talk about that.
Three inch caliber tree is, like I said, is a big tree.
Yeah.
Save you some money.
It's going to save you a ton of money.
Yeah.
You're talking seventeen of them, and then you're talking forty. You're talking, I was close to seven, twenty-three, thirty-five. You're talking about at least forty, fifty trees of three inch caliber. That's, whoa, that's going to cost you some very serious money. Not only you have to water the heck out of them, like I said, so why, why didn't you come back with that stuff?
We can, we can.
You're not going to require trees of that magnitude?
No.
All right, so Mike, why don't we do that? We're going to come back and rethink this.
We require the trees to be grown. If you want to put an inch, a one and a half inch tree in, the biggest thing is that they are, that they grow afterwards.
Sure.
Yeah, we don't want to see a bunch of trees dying out there.
Yeah, nobody wants that. So Mike, make a note to that when we, when we, when we get going here and we'll come back and revisit this.
Absolutely, and I, you know, I would, I'm going to have to defer to our, because I'm not a landscape architect. So I, I will definitely defer to them and, and, but thank you for that comment. It's definitely, I'm, I'm glad you pointed that out, so.
So we also have a mandatory water ban in effect with no outside watering at all allowed.
Yeah.
So the Amherst is actually telling us, we don't have to plant our stuff right now in the new building for that very reason, because it's just going to die. So.
I mean, yeah.
They're going to give us, they're going to give us a temporary CO without even any landscape, because it's just, just going to die.
We want to see two things, we want to make sure that you put something and it grows. We don't want you to go broke doing it, and we don't want to waste a lot of water in the meantime, so that's fine, okay.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out.
Appreciate that.
So can I just take a, I have two questions. One is, I just wanted to take a look at the setbacks as shown on this plan. So if you could just scroll down or specifically the front yard setback, that is fifty feet from the property line, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
It looks kind of close on the picture, you're right, Bill.
Yes, I just was wondering on the rendering, it, it does look closer than fifty feet. So I'm just wondering if that rendering is, is to scale, because it's kind of, kind of massive.
Yeah, see, this is the fifty front yard setback that we're showing here. And then we actually are pushing the, the face of the building back another half a foot.
Yeah, where's the sidewalk? No sidewalk?
So the sidewalk, yeah, we're, so this is the existing sidewalk that's out on Russell Street. And where the current driveway entrances, we're actually going to infill that with new sidewalk here. This is going to be existing. And then we're providing sidewalks so that folks can walk in, walk here and into the main entrance here. So there is sidewalk provided to the building.
I'm sure once the tenants get aware of your site, they're going to use the, the light by Applebee's and come in the back door, or which would you call the front door?
The only way to get in if you're westbound.
That's right.
And the only way to get out if you want to go westbound, so.
Correct.
So remind me, did, I thought you said that the loading dock or the overhead loading door was on the is it on the west side?
Yeah, that's right in this area here.
Okay.
And again, we provided, you know, some buffer plantings over in this.
So you, you're not accommodating a tractor trailer backing up to a loading?
No, 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 this would be like a van or, you know, some other type small vehicle. No, no WB50s in here. There, there just wouldn't be the room for that either. It's strictly like van type delivery.
And have you consulted the fire chief?
The plans have been submitted, I understand, when I checked with your town clerk, because there was a question about, you know, the distribution materials. And I believe he has, she had indicated that he has the plan.
Okay. Yeah, we, we're, we're not going to be voting tonight, obviously. So I would appreciate it if you would reach out to the, the fire chief just to, just to be sure that you're satisfying all of his requirements for structural access, turning radius and the like.
Yeah, as we typically do, we do run a, a turning template for, you know, typical piece of fire apparatus through the site. You know, to make sure that, for example, the radiuses on the islands, that they're going to be able to get in here. You know, particularly like in this area here. But absolutely, we can, we can double check with him to see where he's at with his review.
We have some pieces that perhaps are not typical. So we just need to make sure that be proactive with the chief, don't, don't wait to hear from him. And I also had a question about the, I didn't see, I didn't notice any detail on your lighting standards.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'll have to double check that. I don't believe that we included that, but I can, that, that's something we can definitely provide.
So our, our bylaw requires, is it, it's fifteen feet, I believe, although we have received requests from other property owners that if they could go to twenty or twenty-five, that they could put in fewer poles. And we also very specifically want to be sure that there is no that, that there's, that it is shielded sufficiently so there is no glare from.
Correct.
We really preferred the, the shoebox style, and there may be others. Mr. Shumway put up some beautiful gas lantern style fixtures at the, it was the Holiday Inn Express at the time. And we got nothing but complaints from the neighbors, even though the, the actual light level at the property line was fine, but the neighbors felt like they were staring at hot hotspots.
And Mr. Shumway was very, very specific to point out that those were specifically requested by the historical commission.
Thank you.
Exactly what he provided.
Thank you, thank you, and I got a nice visit.
I will never forget that one.
I, I remember and, and I enjoyed putting it up and I, and, and Mr. Zagrodic came and asked if I would consider changing them after somebody cut trees down and didn't like their view. And yes, you're, you're, yeah, Joe, how are you? Yeah, that was, I would, I thought they were quite nice looking, but we did too. Jim, you remember it correctly.
Yep, they're, they're very nice fixtures and don't get me wrong, they're gorgeous looking, but unfortunately, they sometimes, what looks nice doesn't work so well. So we've changed our criteria to like Mr. Dwyer said, we like the, the kind of a bland looking texture, but boy, they put the light downward and they work well.
Yeah, that was, those, that's a good story.
Anyway, okay.
Bill, you had my questions answered, so.
You're up, Charlie, every company?
I suppose the only other thing is, what do you, what are you thinking about for signage? I know it's probably premature, but do you have a location? A sign on the building, a pylon sign at the driveway?
Yeah, yes, yes, and yes. I think some of that, I think some of that, like I mentioned before, it comes to the, it comes down to the tenant. Some of the design, if you refer, if you refer to some of the properties over in North Hampton, Cooley Dickinson eventually wanted to put signs on the building. We still have a, we had a signage out front as well. So I, I think we, and it depends, if we've got one tenant, they may be looking for one more significant sign. If we have several tenants in there, our intention is not to litter the building. So I, I, I think that is to be determined, but so I'll just say yes, yes, and yes, we need to be kind of flexible. You, how's that for very clarity?
Well, that's, that's standard. And approval of signs afterwards has been sometimes a standard because you don't know.
Right, well, that's kind of the whole package here. There's, you know, we're going forward here with the general approval for the, for the building. And then when, when all the, the, the tenants and all the issues come in and we can start fine tuning this thing, this is when we will be able to tell you some of that stuff exactly.
Okay. Mr. Gagden, you have, there's several issues that we don't need to go through the approval letters by any step by step. Because they'll kind of detail, to be honest, we just want something that says it works and complies. So there's, I guess there's a couple of issues, because you could just mention those that you're working on with the, with works your design?
Sure, absolutely. So I think we're, I think we're almost there. But unfortunately, the last round of review comments we received yesterday afternoon. So there really wasn't time for us to, you know, generate the revisions that they were working, they were looking for in order for them to review it and come back with a final sign off. So I think what we're, you know, without getting into a lot of detail, we are on our second round of review. I think their initial comments was things like some pertinent information in the zoning table. You know, like I mentioned, you know, in the plan set, we actually had added like this butter's map at their request. We had to provide some clarity in the zoning data table, some of the things that they were looking for, like open space, building coverage, they, there was just some little bit of back and forth on that. And then I think lastly, something that we're still trying to resolve with them, and I think we have a fix, is we're actually showing a slight uptick of peak flow getting out onto Russell Street. I think for the ten year storm event, we were talking less than a CFS. However, I, I certainly understand where they're coming from because Route nine is, is under the auspices of Mass DOT, and they do not like to see like any more runoff getting into their collection system. And really what it amounts to, so one of the things that we had to look at, and if I could just pull it up here and show you what I'm talking about. So this is our watershed map that's included on our storm water management study. So the area that we're looking at, if you noticed, right up in here, there's this triangular area. And we were trying to, to get this to work, but unfortunately, the, the way the, the grading worked, we had a little bit more, this little area that was getting out onto Russell Street. So one of the things that we managed to do is we're creating a high point essentially right at the back of the sidewalk. And we're going to actually warp this pavement a little bit so that most of this area will be captured and, and drained directly into the storm water management basin. But as I had mentioned, we didn't have the liberty of time to actually revise the plan. So I think we got a fix for that. We've already run the analysis and we're essentially matching the, the existing peak flows from analysis point three, which is this discharge point from the site. So I think we've got that worked out. And, you know, I, I think that's kind of the remaining issue that we need to resolve with them. And there is one other thing related to drainage that they had a question on. And that was to ensure that we show a comparison of existing versus proposed peak flows at the various design points. You know, typically, we like to show for the purposes of the storm water report, we do a general kind of like a roll up of what the overall peak flow is from the site. In other words, the addition of all of these so that you get an idea of, of where we're coming from. And if you want to drill into, for example, what is the peak flow at analysis point two, pre versus post, you can get into the HydroCAD analysis. So, you know, they just requested that, that we include that in the narrative and, and we're prepared to do that also. So that's kind of, kind of it in a nutshell in terms of some of the comments, remaining comments that we need to resolve with them. I think they're on board with, with everything else, you know, such as the, what we're showing on the plans. They're good with the traffic impact study. So that, that's that's yet to be resolved, or you know, the drainage, yep.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So like Mr. Dwyer said, we're not going to make a vote tonight. We can't hold a meeting on the sixth because that's a voting day, so we can't make any, we can't hold a public hearing and make any official votes on that. The twentieth, we do have a public hearing, but I don't think that's going to be a really big one. It will take some time. Give you a choice of coming back September twentieth, when we already have another public hearing scheduled, or the first Tuesday in October, which is October fourth. What would be your choice?
Either one is fine with me, I'll, I'll leave that up to Kurt as well, in terms of what we'd like to shoot for. We have.
I'm sorry, what are the dates?
September twenty or October four.
Which one's the shortest? Which one would be, which one has the lightest agenda?
October fourth. October fourth is nothing, you'd be the only one on the agenda for that day right now.
Let's do it.
Okay.
Yeah, that would give us time to, to get all these things wrapped up.
Yeah, if, if we do have anything, you'll be number one on the agenda after we go and then we get to a general information. So you'll be first on the hearing warrant.
All right, let's do it that way then, thanks, yep.
And that will give me, uh, time to follow up with your fire chief as well too, so we can get that resolved.
All right, that's fine.
Good night, gentlemen. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you very much. Very good presentation. We appreciate doing, when you apply for something.
You, you saved a few bucks on the trees. I appreciate it as well.
Well, that's not the point. The thing is, I mean, when you come in. You're, you're, you've done this before, you know what's expected and you have. At least seventy-five percent or more already done. So it's a very smooth process.
Well, but you can teach an old dog. We, eventually we get it right.
That means you can go to the bank now.
Okay, so I will continue this hearing to October, uh, October four, six forty-five PM.
Good night, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Dwyer, oh, we have an invoice to pay. We have an invoice to the Daily Hampshire Gazette. Oh, wait, where is it? Wrong one. Here we go. Um, for four hundred dollars and thirty cents for thirty thirteen with a public, yeah. Start again. We have an invoice something is that for four hundred dollars and thirty cents for the public hearing notice. Legal notice for thirteen Russell Street.
I'll make a motion to pay. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any, a, a glimpse? Motion passes four zero with one absence. Okay. Um, yeah, that's all. Mr. Dwyer, you have a few things to discuss.
I put a couple of things on the, uh. On the agenda policy, uh. About whether we'll accept freehand drawings or renderings of proposals. And, uh, Jim and I had talked about this a little bit, uh. You remember the proposal that came up, uh, from the, uh. Well, let me just see if I can pull it up. It's just an example of maybe what we don't necessarily want.
Later place?
Yeah.
Well. Yeah, I won't go looking for it. It's, uh, but you remember that, uh, what, uh, Mr. Carr came in with was not all that clear. Um, what the gentleman came in earlier tonight on graph paper, apparently to scale was a lot clearer. So, um. What's, what's our pleasure?
I think we want a drawing drawn to scale. Showing the property, showing everything on the property to scale. Existing and proposed, because we've run into enough issues and we'll use Mr. The Cyto House as one. Where he, he kind of, he tried to give, I'll give the gentleman credit for trying to make a drawing together. Um, and when he went to get a driveway permit, he went out there with a building inspector and the DPW. Uh, acting director and, cause he asked Mr. Dwyer and myself at a meeting that we had, does he have to approve it? And we were very clear, no. We approved the zoning aspect of it. But if it doesn't meet the criteria of building, BPW, Board of Health or other. You absolutely have the authority, if not the. Proper thing to say no to it and make it correct. Because we don't wanna, just because one board approved doesn't mean everybody else has to. And they went out there and found out some issues with it. And it wasn't that they said you can't do this, but there was a bunch of corrections that he needs to make to the property. To give it the second driveway cut.
So I did just get something from, uh. Building office this afternoon and, um. I think that it, in fact, it was approved. Uh, had initially been disapproved, but then, uh, then did get approved.
Okay.
But I'm not, uh, I, yeah, well.
You ask what, what our, what our wishes are. It has to be.
Go ahead, Tom.
Was that for the driveway for cars?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, he re, he had it all redrawn up and, uh, Scott accepted it, approved.
Okay, okay. Okay.
I think this is, this is what the revised plan looks like. Yeah, that's, that's a lot better than. That's not what he showed us originally.
Right. Oh, and, and even all the buildings are, even on this plan.
Yeah, but, and, and that's okay. That's this plan.
Yeah.
So going forward. I'm of the opinion, we want a drawing to scale with everything on the property. Parking, buildings, access, everything needs to be to scale. If they draw themselves on graph paper or whatever it may be, as long as it's, and then it can't, it can't be a freehand drawing. They can, they can, they can use drawing tools, a square or level, whatever you wanna call it, but it must be to scale. Everything on it. Um, that's just my opinion. If they wanna get it professionally done, like some of the surrounding towns require. Professionally drawn drawings, actual stamps. I don't think we wanna go quite that far.
Does the building inspector require when somebody is gonna place a building? Uh, now that we have him here, does it require, does he do the measurements as far as the setback? Where the foundation is gonna be located, or does he require a surveyor to put pins there?
Normally on the, a new home plan, it's gonna be served, they do their septic. Tank, there's a septic system that's been turned into Board of Health, which will have a, you know, surveyor do it. Um, otherwise it's, it's, we do not require an actual engineered plan.
So do you do the measurements?
Nope, they have them on the plan and it's at their risk.
Okay, and because. Once about a time a building inspector made somebody move a house. So, okay, thank you.
It's something to think about and, and a lot of communities, you know, probably in the next twenty years, some have already started is doing actual ASBills before they'll get a CO. So, you know, everything's black and white, right where that septic is, the sewer line, the water, the house. And it's just the added expense, unfortunately, to the, you know, the homeowner.
Oh. Is, how does everybody else feel about scan drawings versus actual something drawn? If you want, rather make a motion. I will put some words together for our next meeting that we can vote on if we wanna make it a, a drawing to scale.
Okay, sir.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, rather try to shoot from the hip of what we wanna say. Let's have it in writing. We can agree to it. I'll send it around. Is this what you wanted to say or should it be something different?
Right, try to give us an idea which way north is.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, no, that's a good point. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, show the nearest, yeah, yes. Not everybody gets north right every time. Sometimes it's helpful to know how the property lays out when you see what the surveyor comes back with for a plot plan. So. The only other thing, uh, we did get noticed and I think I did send it around to everybody that the, um. Zoning bylaws were approved by the Attorney General's Office. They did, uh. Uh, strike the.
Plastic.
Plastic requirement, that the, the stores could sell at no more than ten cents a bag of replacement. That, that was outside the purview of the town, but the zoning was approved. Uh, Jim, I did read through it and. It. They just wanted to be sure we knew what the procedure was, because we actually. Technically, the state law says you're supposed to start by filing with the town clerk, so the clock will start running. And then the town clerk is supposed to transmit it to us. But since the town clerk isn't equipped to determine whether a plan is complete or not upon filing. That's why we ask them to be filed with us and then we get it to the clerk the next day.
And, and. It would, by the time the town clerk gets the filing fee, chances are everything is already in the works getting scheduled. I mean, I, I understand, okay, that's, that's what that means. That we're a little bit going around the law, but we aren't trying to circumvent it and delay it. We're actually moving it faster. If anything.
We generally. If we accept a plan, we generally assign a hearing date. That night.
That's correct. Yeah.
And the other thing was just a caution on the signs that, uh. Whatever the bylaw says, there are other requirements out there about. What can be on signs and, you know, basically they wanted to discourage. In this case, the building inspector from, um, or they wanted to discourage the town from imposing restrictions on. What signs are out there, uh, that are. Uh, potentially discriminatory.
Right.
Um, and I think we worded it as carefully as we could to not get into that, uh. The, the AG's office admitted that on its face, it was, uh, it was content neutral, which was the goal all along. So, uh.
Yeah, we can't, we can't remove political signs. We can't remove these, uh, Black Lives Matter signs and these. And, well, that's not our intention. We're trying to get rid of those, all these roofing advertising signs that have shown up in the last couple of weeks. I talked to Tom today and he says he removed something like fifty of them in the last week and a half. They're all over the place. They're, 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 they're growing.
Maybe Adam Quinneville could be, uh, more cost efficient on his estimates if he didn't spend so much money. Um, printing advertising.
He's not the only one. That was surprising. It was, I saw three different roofing companies signed in the same yard one time. Three different companies. So then when, when one puts one in, I think the others are right behind them putting them in.
Well. The sign company is paid to put them up by three different customers.
Yeah, well, the side company is making some money, because now they're going back out there. The sign's not there. Make me, make them some more. That's what it is. Mr. Quinn has got on a hooch with the sign making companies.
So I, I will get.
It's not a little back to them.
Yeah, uh, Jessica expressed some concern about what the. She, she didn't actually want to worry about what the AG's office said. She just said, they said a lot. More than they usually do. And I will get back to her and just tell her it's okay, that we're on, we're on top of it.
That, that would be good, yeah. Okay. Okay, um. I have nothing else. Anybody have anything else?
I don't have anything else. Uh, next meeting in three weeks, we'll have Ken Comio with us. Filling in for the public hearing we can't have.
I did, I forgot it was, I didn't know it was election day till Jessica let, let me know. That was, that was good. Glad I got it out there as soon as I did to not be at the last minute. Okay. Um, meeting to a, motion to adjourn?
So moved. So moved. Mike, are you up?
Come, come over here. I gotta give you something for Jack. I gotta see if I three wants to go, but I gotta give you something.
Okay.
We got a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.